Thank you everyone for coming out this evening. And I know Jim Brady is not going to be here this evening, but I think he would be buying some of our work. If you would please join me in standing for the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to move right into our agenda. And after our opening, we have an opportunity for public comments. Anyone who would like to speak to the board on any matters pertaining to the agenda or other issues that might pertain to the district, now we'll be back. Just state your name, where you live.
I've done this once or twice. Good morning. They were going to construction until 3:00 in the morning because I got like no sleep anyway, sorry. Good evening. Vincent Bianconi, 3609 Percumban Avenue, liaison with the township to Mike Chapina. So just want to kind of give you guys a heads up or update. Mike and I have been meeting pretty regularly and outside of that, we've been texting, calling. So when we do meet, we have some substance to talk about. And I just can't say enough about how the township, we're just appreciative to have the channels with Mike. And we discussed some things about the bus bar and you know, having some room for the buses. So we're currently working with the highway department, the fleet manager and like the township manager to see if we would have any room up there possibly. And then we also were talking about other avenues, about possibly you guys using if once we put in new like a gas pumps that you guys could use them for filling up your buses and you know, we would work out some kind of a fair deal for everybody. I know the, when I talked to the highway manager, he said that, you know, I guess it was talked about doing it at the township building where we're at now, but it's hard for the buses to get in and out because it's such a narrow way. So I know if that's something that we're going to do, when we do the plan, that if worst case, we can at least try and make accommodating so that it would be efficient for the buses to help out. So just want to give you guys an update, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Let's support you here tonight because we're going to be just going right into our transportation report with Mr. Wegman, so I hope you stick around for that.
Oh, I'll be here too.
Good, thank you. Thanks for the comments and for being involved with the district. That's, I mean, we really appreciate the, you know, the outreach and being here as well.
Sure.
And I know we value trying to do everything we can to facilitate, I think, a relationship with the township that is mutually beneficial.
Oh, no, and no doubt. I mean, especially going forward with us moving through Promenade and I was talking to a lady about, you know, a community slash rec center would be fantastic even with the police and the fire, the volunteer firemen. I just think, you know, having some good positive role models and, you know, having a safe place for kids to come and go and we had just going forward, it's just going to be great going on. So, thank you very much.
I just want to say, I too am very grateful that we're the township and the school district that, you know, is going to be working together to do different things because in the past, you know, it was very confrontational. And I'm glad to see that, you know, you and, you know, I've gotten a doctor over there and probably...
Over here?
Mike Chapina.
I mean, I think they're working together and I think it is because they put things through those and we're looking for us. Now, I just wanted to ask this one question. Do you think they're ever going to have propane?
Um, yeah, I don't see that we wouldn't have it up there as well. I mean...
How does she need fuel?
To like to for like a fueling station?
Yeah.
Well, we can definitely discuss it.
Yes.
It's not around with discussing it.
You know, we all know that that's much better for the environment than diesel fuel. So, and we all know that climate change, there needs to be addressed carefully so that our grandchildren can all be able to live here.
Sure.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Bianconi. And I don't know who you know this, but that's my child here.
Yes, her, my mom, her great friend.
Well, everything you said was a conflict. That's a good point.
Thank you guys.
I guess we're kind of just lost in that.
I know it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other, any other, any other public comments? Okay, we're going to move on to our next report of our agenda. Mr. Wegman, so let me give you sort of a report on our transportation services.
Okay, good evening. We received four new buses that are in service for this school year. We also purchased one new van. We, last year we asked for two vans. We held off on two of those to see how, where we went with the RFP and contracting. The van, we decided to get a van because we found out we would be transporting... We'd be transporting two students to Hershey for a special ed. So that was the reason for getting the van that we had to add. For next year, the same. I'd like to get four buses, two 77 passengers, a 54, and then also to get a, another wheelchair bus. The wheelchair bus, buses that we're getting now are climate controlled. We're getting more and more students in our special ed that require the climate control. So anytime we get a wheelchair lift bus for special ed, I feel that we should get climate control on those buses. We'd also like to get the two vans that we didn't get last year. They wouldn't be additions, they would be replacing. All these vehicles are replacing. I have listed what those vehicles would actually be traded in on. One manufacturer is coming out from the factory with all wheel drive, straight from the factory, which is supposed to be available after October. So we want to look into that because the safety of an all wheel drive vehicle, especially the vans, is unsurpassed. So we will be looking at that. Last year, we did a lot of surveillance work in the buses. A lot of video equipment has been installed. The brand new buses don't have it in yet. By the end of the month, they will. The manufacturer is coming to install that, those things. What I included for you is the fleet first by capacity. I have it sorted by capacity. For our fleet, we have 50 school buses and 14 student vans. One of those vans is used for the crossroads at the high school and another is used for the mail run and for food delivery here at administration. So that leaves us with 12.
Food from administration? We don't, we don't get food from...
Not food here, no. It's, food is prepared at one school, at one school and is transported to another school. Food service uses that van.
Thanks for clearing that up.
10 of the other vans, we have on routes, which leaves us two spares for athletics and teachers to use during the school day. Out of that group of buses, seven are wheelchair lift buses, nine are 54 passenger, two are 72 passenger, 12 77 passenger, five 78 passenger, and we have 15 81 passenger. I also included after the capacity, the fleet I have sorted by year so that you can see the age of the buses and the different vehicles that we have. Also, I gave you the mileage that we ran last year for each vehicle. Our mileage was greater last year. We were at 668,000 miles. The previous year, 621,000. I attribute that to new special needs programs that were basically down in the Norris Town area for that increased mileage. This year, we managed to take one bus away from secondary routes and one bus away from non-public routes. But adding the Hershey run, I think the mileage, we won't see any mileage savings. The total trip requests we had was 731. 330 of those were school, 401 were athletics. And that was up from the previous year. After that, I gave you the state report information. This is how I compile the information to complete the state report. The second page of that is the breakdown actually per route. And that's how I tally up the numbers. I gave you a third page this year, which I tried to give you all the different homeless students that we transported in district that were actually exceders and also out I've given you a school directory. These are the schools that we are serving this year. That, this doesn't count what a contractor might be doing for us. These are schools that Exeter is actually transporting to. And then lastly, I gave you a breakdown of our routes, who's driving them, what bus is assigned to them, and then also which schools those different routes cover. Is there any questions?
Rick, can you maybe just brief us and maybe Rob can help you with this about some of the issues with transportation facilities and where areas are at, where you guys have identified need for improvements and repairs?
You mean with our present?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We want to keep it brief, that'd be appreciated. I know that might not be the easiest subject to be brief, but...
Well, the structure is over 40 years old. The block building, which was added in 74, the wood sheds go previous to that. The roofs are in very bad shape on all the wooden sheds. The roof leaks on the main garage. There's not adequate parking there for the employees. We have anywhere 60 employees that come there at a given time. Many of them have their doors dinged just because of the close proximity that everyone has to park. We have had problems parking our own vehicles. There's been some things just because of how everything has to be backed in the close proximity. It's something that we, has been all discussed for years, you know, in the facilities committee. And that's why the previous board went to building the new facility. It is also for, when I started in this position in 93, the first thing that was told to me by Mrs. Dyber, unfortunately has passed away, was we want to move that garage. And at that time, it was because of pulling out on Kerr Road. And at 93, there wasn't near the traffic that there is now. But all the boards were consistent from that time on that any money spent at that facility, they thought would be wasted tax dollar money.
I had a question, I had a question about ridership. Do you maintain any, any data at all in terms of, if you have a 65 capacity bus or something like that, what, over your bus typically is, what kind of utilization we have for transportation services? Do you maintain any of that data at all?
Well, we have the rosters of who's assigned to them. And in a state report, you can see that's who's assigned to each route. The first three, four days of the, of the school year, we take load counts mainly for the secondary. The secondary, you don't know who's going to actually use the bus. We did have, we just recently moved one stop off of one bus because we had a few students that had to sit three to a seat. Not that that's illegal, but it's uncomfortable, so...
Yeah, I understand you have a roster and you have to include virtually every student in the district other than a worker.
Right, they're assigned.
And what we do note, a lot of families choose to drive their kids to school. So my, my question really is what percentage of our students who are assigned to buses actually drive the buses in this area? I mean, do we keep data on that or would you only be able to ballpark that?
I would only be able to ballpark that. I mean, I'd have to go to those first couple of days of school and, and see what's there. Because also in the elementary levels, you have the childcare. Some don't use it at all because of childcare, but are still assigned to the bus. Some of our childcare providers are actually in the attendance area. So we are making room for those students, so...
Yeah, just, I guess my, and my rambling about joining and asking the question is, you know, whether or not we're using our buses as efficiently as we possibly could considering the fact that we're probably not filling these buses up to capacity that we expect them to be on a regular basis. Now, I understand that we have to be prepared for the possibility that every single student side of that bus is going to decide to ride to school on a particular day. But the reality of this, I think, is almost zero percent.
Yeah, well...
But I don't know where you would go in terms of like scaling back that percentage and saying, well, we're going to fill, we're going to fill the roster to, you know, 75% capacity to the ridership or something like that.
Well, secondary, that's why we did take one route away. There is one less and that did fill the buses more. There are certain geographic areas which make it a little bit more difficult, but in the morning, they're, they're fuller. And again, it's hard to say who's going to use it. Reifton, Reifton is a whole different thing. Reifton, those routes are strictly by time. We have a narrow time limit to get those students home or to school before we go to the elementaries. So the buses that we use there are needed to cover the whole district. Yes, there are some that might only have 30, some might only have 20. But the time needed is, you need those. When we get to elementary, some of those are pretty full. There are students sitting three to a seat in the elementary level. At Jacksonville, we picked up a lot of students over the summer. And I think most of our elementaries, more I think than, more than I was expecting.
Well, I think more of the thing, I just want to pick up on something that this issue is often about is our ability of propane vehicles. And I know you're looking at ordering new vehicles in the future and I talk about this every year and I'm going to reiterate how, you know, I'm one of those people who really believes that propane is going not only for this, the benefit for the environment, but also is much more efficient in terms of its operation and repairs and maintenance that are much lower, you know, on propane vehicles. It's also the future, you know, foreseeable future anyway, so we'd like to debate that, I suppose. But, you know, I'm wondering what, how feasible it is to start to purchase those considering we don't have fueling infrastructure at this point right now to actually, to do that. That may be a worthy consideration. We start to talk about, you know, the transportation facility and we start to look at, you know, what it's going to look like. I think that's something we probably want to take into consideration as well. And it may not be something that we can accommodate on our current site. And you mentioned space issues and I know fueling for propane requires a little bit more space because of how the, the tank is situated, what ground has to be protected, the fencing, that sort of thing. So I'm just throwing that out there as, you know, as you're, as you're thinking this through, I want to, I want to kind of prompt you and the administration to take seriously about what we could do to possibly start to move this in a direction for propane.
If you wanted to do that, you'd have to have somebody come and, a vendor actually fuel them probably every other day. Because they, they only get half the miles per gallon of a diesel bus. So they use twice as much fuel.
But it's not quite twice as costly.
We get a, we get a nice, we get a nice break.
I, I just, it's a fuel, it's a house fuel, a beauty fuel.
And I have been thinking about it and I would target our routes that are less than 50 miles a day first. I don't think we could ever be totally away from all teesels because some of our athletic trips go pretty far. In fact, our, our varsity seem to do more out of county things than they do in county. So...
I just wanted to say, you know, along with the lines of thinking about how full the buses are, I think you touched about, you know, how far they drive is important and I think that comes with the, my kids. I don't feel like we're that far away from One Creek, but I think they're almost the farthest away from my kids. I don't think that their bus is full, I don't know because I don't see it. My kids are on the bus in the afternoon for 30 to 40 minutes. So I would prefer not to fill that bus anymore and make my kids be on there longer because they're, they're already telling me that they're bored sitting on there, which is good because they haven't taken books. But they're on there a long time. And then along with that, I think their bus driver Tammy is amazing. She puts up with those kids when they are bored and when they're acting up and I'm very proud of the bus drivers in the afternoon.
I just want to, sorry, I just know that on, on the list of bus drivers, when it says open route, does that mean that there's no bus driver, like a substitute has to go on or something?
Correct. Yeah, fortunately, we have a couple of retired drivers who help us. In our mix, Jenny Lechner is, that's actually her job, a substitute, but she's on Route 1 now. Our mechanic helper, he's on a route daily.
Sometimes he P U out.
Yes, sometimes on driving, sometimes bench driving. So it all depends. But yeah, they don't have someone assigned to them.
Rick, did you notice we have a bus driver wanted advertisement, buys a lot of them? Does that yield any interest at this point?
I think two.
And how short are we in terms of staffing right now? How many?
We could use probably five licensed school bus drivers.
Thank you, the board.
Okay, thank you.
I hope we see you next week in facilities committee. Just kind of real thoughts on transportation. Thank you. Okay, we're going to head into our agenda here. And we remind board members that this is consent agenda, which means that if you encounter an item that you think you're not going to be building approval of, signal us and we'll pull that from the motion and we'll vote forward and, and vote separately. So the first item, item four, minutes, and we'll turn between two sets of minutes. The first voting meeting is minutes of April 15. Workshop meeting of the 10th and September 17. Oh, sorry. I mean, we approve in September 10th both our workshop and September 17. Can I make a motion for those two? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The treasurer's report. Recommended that the board school directors approve treasurer's report September and the board requests for September and October 25th. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board policy. Recommended that the board of school directors approve policies listed under section six, numbers one through 12.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Business functions, Mr. Gill.
I just recommend that the board of school directors approve the following two business items listed, A and B.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gill. Mr. Chapina, personal agenda.
Recommended the board of school directors approve, ratifies the following personnel items, one resignation, two retirements, three appointments, extracurricular activities. I think we'll hold on to the certificated substitutes and teachers, we'll come back to that one. Four, change of status. Five, leave of absence. Six, course request. Seven, staff conferences. Eight, the job script for the new position of food service delivery driver, which is budgeted for national savings.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommended the board of school directors approve, ratifies the following personnel, certificated substitutes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All opposed?
She just guessed E.
Oh, okay. Did you say yes or no?
She's good, she's...
They're good.
She's good until you get to the next one.
Motion carries.
Recommended the board of school directors approve, ratifies the following personnel items, guest teachers.
Second. Any discussion? I just want to say, I think it's really exciting to see Ann Ryder come back. I graduated with Annie, and I know that she worked with us previously and I think that people like her of the highest quality. And we're really lucky to have people who are willing to invest in the district here. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All opposed? Motion carries.
Second. Recommended the board of school directors approve, ratifies the following personnel items, support substitutes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is that it? Yes, that's it. We just want to point out that you all are here and thank you for coming. Amy's our supervisor of the county staff and we're very excited that you're coming. Anything you want to say about...
No, I, I would just want to add that, you know, we did, we did a nice search. Angie came out, or I should say Andy came out as the top candidate. She came highly recommended from her references and welcome her as well if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. So I'll just say first, I do go by Andy, so some people said hello to me and I really appreciate it, especially Andrea Wallach. I just want to say how honored I am to be here, how excited I am to be here. I'm really looking forward to just getting to work with the leadership team, with building principals, with our teachers, and the community really to ensure that what we're doing in math and STEM is helping students maximize their outcomes. And we want to see that for all students and I look forward to the hard work ahead. Thank you.
We'll work with you too.
Chief Mayor, we'd just like to add, Stephen Williams, who was appointed the assistant principal at Reifton School today, he found an attendance, he hadn't been there. So I asked you to have my thing, we wanted him in here with, but he sends his regards.
Okay, student functions, Mrs. Grant.
All right, just going to report on the following student function items that our group of 61 is. We've recommended that the board of school directors approve the following student function items, one degree and five degrees.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended that the board of school directors approve item four.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any attention? Any extensions? One extension. Motion carries. Thank you.
Why, why doesn't someone have a good reason to do an extension if they're a school director?
They don't have to give, I don't think they have to articulate a reason, but if they feel that they have a conflict, then they do stay.
I don't mind giving a reason, I know, I know this child and the family, so I know a little bit more about it than everyone else does and I just feel like for that reason, I shouldn't go.
I'll do a point on the topic.
And the family, because I'm friends, I hear stuff that I probably shouldn't.
Yeah, it's up to every board, I wish you gauge their, their, their sense of whether to represent. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to athletic committee, Mr. Aaron.
So, I just want to update the board on some school successes and then I'll go into the other items that need to be approved.
What?
No, he's giving it now, this is, this is his report.
It looks like, yeah.
Yeah. You've got to score his scores.
I was right. Jerry. Three of our teams have advanced in the BCI, double A and district playoffs. Football, girls volleyball and field hockey and they're all having very successful seasons, especially girls volleyball, that thirteen won this season. And I know that there were also some Exeter cross-country runners that were featured in the Red Eagle this morning and we're having a good season and there's more to come for the rest of the fall and getting ready for some of our winter sports. And I recently spoke with the boys' basketball coach, Chan, he's very excited about the things that they're going to do this upcoming season. Other than that, there are two items on the agenda, recommend that the board's school directors approve items one and two.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Aaron. Tricam programs and Tricam free talk.
Tricam committee met last Tuesday, October eighth. Dr. Wiers gave an update on virtual academy program, quarter update. The virtual school teachers received training for engineering representatives. It was a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars that was paid by two funds and as they moved forward, you know, around to do engineering, they need much training. The students on October eighth, they met, the students and parents had orientation and met with all of their teachers, they are full-time students, ones that could make it paying for orientation with teachers and we talked about it, asked questions. Ms. Devlin gave a report on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty literacy goals and results of children and she talked about, you know, how they're going to do the intervention, support for the literacy network. She did, she broke it down by, the goals were the elementary schools, the secondary and then also the ESL. And yeah, regarding, you know, the minutes, I really noticed a lot of detail about, you know, all of what happened at the meeting and Ms. Devlin also gave, she had a handout to put those goals out specifically to look at that and see what the specific goal is. We have our next meeting.
Thanks, Doc.
Excuse me, Dr. Vander Wille, we're on line, Kirk, um, Patrick, please get an update on how the training went with the, um, I was going to do it, my superintend.
Yeah, Dr. Phil has the question for you.
Thank you.
Facilities committee, I'll just cover this one. We have two items for approval, so recommend that the board school directors approve items one and two on the agenda. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think it might be worthwhile, we just added a business function committee. I wonder maybe, Anne, if you could just sort of explain to the board that as part of the audit, the audit our representative report talked about us being sort of sixty percent away, sixty percent of the way through a life of our precious assets. And thus, the investment in our HVAC systems and our buildings starts to, if not, not reduce that percentage, which means like we're, you know, we have forty percent of the life of those assets left, if you're at sixty percent, you start to hit the seventy percent range and things alarm and start to go off. So, some of these investments that we have on the agenda tonight are in effect delaying the aging of those assets in such a way that we try to open our shelves up and that, fair assessment.
That's a very, very good summary. He was just pointing out, you know, that it's an indicator of whether district or school board is making efforts to replace assets that are decreasing and aging in our district. As a result of the facility study, our approach is to kind of replace the HVAC, the major controllers, the rooms are all in good shape, it's really not doing major building renovations. So, I think we're doing all the right things. Our government really doesn't dictate any need for additional space or additions or really major renovation of our building. So, as I said, we're taking a look at that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And just in terms of facilities committee, there will be a facilities committee meeting, I believe it's next Wednesday, here at the administration building, six thirty. Six thirty. Personal committee, Mr. Prentice.
I don't really have a report other than to thank the folks that have worked through processes of recent hires. Several years ago, put plans in place and Mr. Powell, I think that the resurface is really good, can't be so. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Prentice. Policy committee, just want to indicate that we have received a request from the administration to do memorial policy. So, right now, we're in the process of getting some sample policies from PDH, just to kind of compare them to what's been generated, see if there's any variation, any content and so forth. And I think the part of that will probably be administrative regulation, we still have to kind of figure that out and work together on that. I think that's really the only thing that's going on right now, policy, and you have ongoing parade of policies you see, thanks for being here.
Are you close to the end?
I, where are we in?
Eight hundred. We started, just time to start over again.
Student functions committee, Mrs. Scranton.
I just want to remind you, one of the student forums is Friday, one of my favorite things of the year, if you're going to attend that, that would be wonderful. How's student functions related? Also, the board of the committee was supposed to meet this week, but unfortunately that was canceled. The agenda was the same as the community forum, which is on Monday, so I encourage obviously the board members and the community to attend that Monday at seven o'clock.
Real quick question about the committee tomorrow. Will that be filmed like our meetings are here?
I, we don't think, nobody remembers that.
Because we'd be able to film this. Because I won't be there.
Well, you should be there.
Can we not give your personal presentation?
Yeah, or, yep, you can do that. Record it too, whatever you want to do. I'll listen to it on the car ride.
There you go.
I don't think it'd be, it'd probably record you.
Do you need RSVP or can you just show up as a board member? For the student forum? Yes. They do.
We'll, we'll, so, yes, if you're, if you're coming, you can pitch in. All in favor, you take all.
Okay, I will. I think he'll.
Technology committee, Mrs. Page. Exeter Community Education Foundation, Mrs. Wilson.
Our thanks to Mr. Casades and Burke's hometown heroes, coupled with Cozies Ramades on September twenty-seventh, one thousand dollars was donated to the multi-teacher ability students at One Creek. The teachers and the dozen students in these classrooms are looking forward to community-based instruction in the Exeter area. Exeter Education Foundation would also like to recognize the start of the EITC season, better known as the Educational Improvement Tax Credit. Thank you to Pediatrics Therapy Services for their fourteen hundred dollar donation last week to start this year's program. For over ten years, ECF has been the five oh three C, no, five oh one C three organizational arm of this program for Exeter Township School District. Approved uses of EITC donations include Polycom distance learning, NASA e-emissions, interactive vape marks, artist residence and STEM robotics. Last year, eleven thousand five hundred dollars was donated in total to ECF via EITC funds. We look forward to working with the district and doctoral mentors to find innovative uses for the funds raised from this program. Also, I just wanted to add, Amy put it on our Facebook and I asked her if it was okay to share, yes, Monday, yes, for the in-service, the, there was a group at the high school that worked with their Raspberry Pi training and originally, Mr. Potter had put it into the request for the EITC for four thousand dollars in training. And unfortunately, the state said, no, we can't use those kinds of funds for training. But Mr. Potter forged a relationship with, it's how his name was, from Justara IU and yesterday, they received the training that they needed for free. So, we just want to be very thankful to Mr. Potter for making that relationship and making it, making it work for Exeter. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Burke's Career Tech Center, we're going to operate a committee, Dr. Plon.
So, we met at West Campus, we wanted to help patients, they have a newly renovated expanded area of classes under lab. There were some youths there, some seniors, we spoke about how much improved it was, they said they had hospital beds with manicure, nannies, or patients that are, they're not real one.
Magics?
No, no, they're not real. They have names, they have names and, you know, ages and things like that. But anyway, so they talked about how they used to have, they say, four students on one, and now they can do one for one on one. And one of the things they, they mentioned about the, I didn't want to call them nannies because nannies just stand there.
They are, they just lay there, same thing.
I know, but they do things.
I know. Horizontal.
If a student, if a student is, say, you know, like they'll ever be patient, they're moving it in the wrong way, they call them pain.
No, they're very much more advanced than what you normally use it.
Yes, and then the, the teachers can make the patients kind of scream out in pain and acting, so I, I, but anyway, so they have a nicer area, they expanded the, Megatronics moved out, moved to different locations, so they gained some space there. They, the assistant director resigned, resigned and they're, they're replacing yet, but they're going to start that hiring process in this week. The one school counselor also resigned and they are not going to fill as a school counseling position, they are going to change that, make it coordinator of student services, so it could be a school counselor and not be a school counselor. So, I was, I'm scared I don't want to see them, kind of lose a school counseling position. But they're also, we have presentation on this, they want to for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, enter into partnership with Penn College, I have a slide on the table. And what that is, is it's a dual enrollment, Penn College, there would be no tuition costs to students, the courses will be taught at ECTC and they have received credits that are transferable. So, also, there's going to be, they have their open houses coming up next week, October twenty-second, the Ole campus, Tuesday, October twenty-second, five-thirty to eight-thirty, Ole campus, and then on the following Thursday, the twenty-fourth, the West Campus, Lee's Court, have their open house. That is a very good opportunity to be able to visit all the shops, they have students there that you can talk to. That's one of the highlights of going to that meeting for me, is being able to tour the programs and see what the students are doing and being able to hear from the students. You know, I have just a different impression of ECTC and the technical students that have done it, so I would encourage you, if you are able to visit, you know, either one of those open houses that you do there. And our next meeting is October twenty-third. And, just, Amy, did you even, you visited Cosmetology, did you want to share about that? And that said, in my report, I wanted to hear Miss Pia talk about her, she did actually support her.
They have a great place for people that want to get themselves beautified.
Are you looking at me?
Well, you're a beautifier.
Sure, I didn't even beautify it.
She's trying to remember your name. Pretty good line of lines.
So, I, I went to it last Friday and, you know, all you have to do is call, you know, call them ahead of time and let them know you want to come. And they had females that were, you know, working on people, getting their hair dyed or getting their hair washed. I just got my, I got my hair cut a little bit and I got it styled a little bit. But the students were excellent, they're, they're all like juniors or seniors and there is like a teacher in charge of them, she, she always goes around watching, you know, what they're doing, making sure that they're doing the right thing and, and they, it was very, very nice, the girl that I, that worked with, she was extremely nice, you can get your, you can get your nails done, which I did, my nails done and hair done and you can get your hair dyed if you want, you get eyelashes and then whatever you, you know, what you can do in a regular hair salon, you can do for a lot cheaper down there. I think, I don't know, it wasn't mainly twenty dollars to get all that done, I mean, that was like, when you go, you go down to what the one, what the one that you dress with, a hundred bucks for a haircut, you know, what is it?
Or it's a lady?
Yeah. A hundred bucks for a haircut, I mean, you're, you're getting everything. And the girls, you know, they're, well, and there was, there was also a boy, there was also a young man who was also learning to be, you know, hairdresser too. So, it was really interesting. Now, when they don't have any patients in their work one, clients, how I should say the name, then they work, you know, and, and, and they, you know, because they do all that stuff and, you know, that was, you know, like there's, I did with real hair and stuff and it was, it was really, really depressed. So, hey, that's where I'm going to go for my haircuts.
And then once they take, you can, once they're free to hear.
Well, not yet, they, they didn't have them yet, they didn't have it all set up yet. But I am going to go because I heard that the food is excellent. Well, they have to be because they want these chefs to go and, and they get, you know, they get graded on what they do. But it was really nice and it was very, very clean, you know. I didn't see any road to town around.
The Cosmetology was renovated also, it is really nice.
Really, really nice.
Wait, but didn't you get a penny for a penny for a second?
Yeah, yeah, you can get that too.
I mean, you did, didn't you?
Well, actually, you know, I went to my foot doctor and I got, I got, I got my.
I think you're going beyond our scope. She didn't pay for time.
I just, I, I, I just made my mail or, I get the haircuts for men or like, we watch it, it was like really cheap, but.
You would say you paid three hundred.
Now, if you have real long hair, then it's a little different.
You should talk.
But, you know, it's, I, I, I'm going to look down again, first of all, I like to support kids, you know, they're, they're like, you know, they're, they're learning and I like to support students like that and I'm going to look down and, you know, my population will be a lot, you know, have your, without, you know, having to go more than they is.
Your voice is going to be great to hear.
Good job, Pat, you're going to donate a bunch of money.
Oh, yeah, right.
Dr. Glenn, thanks for the report, always interesting. BCIU board of directors, never quite as interesting as ECTC. You have received your.
You have received your, what's happened at BCIU did this in your board packet every meeting session. So I'm not going to go through it, there's a lot of detail, a lot of business that happens in these board meetings. So I'm not going to go through that at all. But I will say that there is a board meeting scheduled for this Thursday evening at BCIU. And move on to, as you say, liaison, Mr. Geller.
Your report, Dr. Lynn.
Township, oh, thank you. Township and Borough Liaison, Mr. Shapin.
I think Mr. Shapin spoke about our communication, and I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Mr. Shapin. Superintendents' report, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Becker, I heard. First, I'd like to recognize one of the teachers at our high school. I received this email on behalf of the Pennsylvania State Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. I am thrilled to notify you that Kevin Schaefer has been named the two thousand nineteen Coaching Excellence Award. The board committee was impressed with Kevin's outstanding coaching skills, professionalism, and dedication to his students and school community. He will receive his award at our state conference held at Spooky Hook Sports on Friday, December sixth. We invite you to join us as we celebrate Kevin, and he's been helping visit teachers. We have asked him to come to a future board meeting if we can be recognized for his award. I won't add much more to Mr. Hunter's speech about the sport programs, but if you've been to any of the games, our all-sports teams, they were out there giving their all for the Eagles. And again, we're looking forward to the winter sports as well. Quick announcement, Thursday, the twenty-fourth, is the Daniel Boone game. It is not on a Friday, it's Thursday. That's the big iron game, that's our rival, so I'm currently negotiating with the superintendent for Daniel Boone to have their board and our board have entered together and then go to the game together. So I'll board to come on after our board.
Thursday.
Yeah. Well, okay, I'll say it. Apparently, there was a conflict with one of the coaches that were going to be involved in a wedding. So they decided to move again.
Well, I mean, in today's world, there's college football on Tuesday, and I win, and I Thursday, and I Friday, and that means, so, so I'm not surprised if it would happen Thursday. I just draw my thinking, I'm getting it from you, I'm trying to move the game for Thursday. But, but this is a big rivalry game, so we want to make sure we're going to get it out in publication, and we want everybody there for the big iron game. The game, the first time you stayed, you're surprised.
I'm not sure if it was.
Yeah, I guess it was.
It was, okay. Quick news, Chancellor Keith Hillkirk at Penn State Berks is retiring at the end of this year. He has been a great partner to work with, we've done a lot of good things with him, and we continue to forge on. We'll find out who the new person is, and we'll create the same type of partnership with a new person. But I just wanted to say that Chancellor Hillkirk has been really easy to work with, great to work with, he's been open to anything we wanted to do. He's also proponent for us, in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow for the lab school that we'll be doing for our preschools, he's pushed that through his school. Mr. Shapin had asked about the professional development session. It was held, it was very informative. The areas that the professional development look at or objectives were research-based pedagogy, meaningfulness, differentiation, and inclusiveness with administrators and teachers. We had, out of two hundred and thirty-seven attendees, two hundred and eleven responses for our survey. In the area of strongly agree or agree that it was a research-based teaching pedagogy, we had a hundred and seventy-six agreed to that out of the two eleven. Was it meaningful, a hundred and forty-nine? Was it differentiated, a hundred and fifty-five? And was it inclusive of administration and teachers, a hundred and seventy-five? So it was a very positive outcome. Some of the areas, you've heard about the Raspberry Pi training, there was also a training on Nuzella, and on the on-hand schools, which was the data that we had just talked about. And then it was time for collaboration for the teachers. Just wanted to touch on some of the examples of what we saw as far as narratives. Using data to drive my curriculum scheduling, using the data to drive instruction. I really liked the on-hand school training session, it's much easier to access needed information at glance, and all in one place. The insight program will be helpful for using it for IEPs. The insight session was nice to figure out what areas I can use to view data on a student or group of students. And I don't believe this is a negative, but one of the, what I saw as a negative was, I wish the session, the session on Nuzella was longer, so we could have more time to work with Nuzella. So, I mean, the teachers really enjoyed the sessions. Overall, very positive. And the last, I just want to, again, put out a, an announcement that the community forum is set for Monday, October twenty-first, at seven o'clock at the Reiften School. We'll be talking about the portrait of a graduate, so we're hoping that the community comes out, they will have an opportunity to give us their input once the presentation has been given, and actually fill out what they want the portraits of the graduate to look like. So anyone that's there, including board members, we will have something for you to give us your impression of what the portrait of a graduate at Exeter would look like when they walk across the stage. Every event we go to from this point forward after the presentation, and we'll have this presentation on our website, we will be looking for input from all different stakeholders. There'll also be a discussion about the budget process, what it will look like, what we'll talk about the different sessions and the four meetings that will be held, November, December, January, and February, to get the input from the community and all stakeholders that want to come to these meetings. Lastly, board members, I did put a packet at your desk. You guys, you all were presented a one-page depiction of the pros and cons of a guaranteed annual savings group. I thought in all fairness, I reached out to McClure, and they have provided, I guess it would be a sense of rebuttal, providing information that will show you that that's... Depiction on that one-page document may have been other types of companies, but that's not a true depiction of what McClure brings to us, as an off. That is my report.
Thank you.
I should say, if you have any questions about that, please contact me, and I can give you further information.
Thank you. Are there any board members who would like to be heard at this time?
I have more time since last week to process the data that Dr. Winters presented to us. And although I know that standardized testing is not the end-all-be-all, and I do not believe it defines who our students are, it is the measure that the state of Pennsylvania uses to evaluate our students. So I think that our data is showing that our current math program is not meeting the needs of our students. And I think there's multiple reasons why, just a few, is that when we introduced the program, we did not allow teachers to incorporate what they already knew, like you guys practices for teaching math. I believe that the program really cut back on our teachers, on our, on our parents' ability to help their children. There's that, bringing home that math book and saying, oh, chapter one, lesson one, let me see what that's about. It's, it's all online, it's very difficult to get through. The problem-solving processes that we're using now are very different than what parents use when they, and parents learned. And then also, we've had multiple people in the role of math coordinator who have had different philosophies as we've gone on. Now, in my experience as a teacher, when I present data at data meetings, and I do that monthly, I'm expected to have a plan in place when I share my data. So I'm deeply concerned that when we had that data presented to us, that there was no plan of action. I feel that I'm continually reminded that my job is governance and not management. However, after watching our test scores decline year after year, I believe something needs to be done now, soon, this next month, the week, month after, we need reports of what's going on so that our students are successful. I found what is the role of the school board, the school board sets the vision and goals for the school district, and holds the district accountable for results. And we're not seeing the results. And that's why I'm asking these questions. If it's not my job, whose job is it? And it needs to get done.
Any response? Dr. Winters?
I don't, I don't disagree with you. The math data is concerning, no doubt about it. I think from a planning standpoint, I was not at a place to present a plan, because I don't think it would have been an accurate plan until we got our supervisor in math and STEM on board, so that that individual could sit down with me, understand, you know, what we want the vision to be. And so that was why a lot of the things that I touched on as possibilities, there are things that I want to talk to Andy about, the intervention piece, I don't disagree with you. I've questioned over the past two years whether or not investigations and CPM were the right answer for math. But I'm, I'm also the kind of leader that believes if we're going to make changes away from a program, it's not just as simple as myself or myself and the supervisor saying, this is what we're going to do. I think teacher input is critical. We have some very talented teachers in math, and, you know, we need to find out, you know, what, what's not working, what is working, is PD needed? Once, once Andy starts, we'll do something similar at, at a curriculum committee meeting to what we did last week with literacy, with Melissa. I'm very cognizant that when you bring on a new supervisor, you know, and new leadership, that informs your plan. And, you know, within about a month, you know, Melissa and I had several conversations about, here's where we have been with literacy, here's where we want to go, and the plan that we shared last week at curriculum committee is our guidance and our plan for how we're going to take literacy and move it forward. The same thing will happen with math. I just didn't want to do that specifically until Andy came on board. We spoke very briefly before the meeting tonight. She's aware that we have a lot of work cut out for us, I'm aware of that, I share your concern. I'm not, I'm not pleased with the math data, I'm not going to try to act as if it's fine, because I don't believe it's fine. And, you know, I also know that ultimately, that, that overall vision for improving curriculum and instruction and the data and the scores, it directly comes out of my office, and so, you know, I know that I bear responsibility ultimately for, you know, seeing some of that improvement. But we're moving in the right direction. I know the data this year doesn't show that, but I know what I see when I go into classrooms, I know what I'm seeing when I'm talking to building administrators, what they're doing at the building level, we're differentiating our professional development, the on-hand schools piece is huge. We, another piece of yesterday was teachers at all grade levels did action planning around literacy, around math, setting goals based on data for next steps. You know, Dr. Phillips and I have that overarching goal for increase in scores, which in turn has become the principal's goals as well. So, yes, we will put that plan out there for math. And, you know, as I've said before, you know, hold, hold me responsible for the data. I'm confident that it's going to get better, I'm confident, you know, in the people that we have in place, and, you know, we'll get there, we have a good team here.
I have to say, Dr. Rose, when Rose Wilensky left, I was really disappointed, you know, because, you know, we really struggled with our math program to see the results, but also had a unique opportunity, I participated in interviews, and I'm really excited to have Andy here. And I know one person is not going to make, you know, all the difference in the world, but I think we're, we're taking a big step forward in bringing Andy, and I look at her background and experience, and I think we're really in an excellent place, and looking forward to, you know, looking forward to your analysis, I'm looking forward to your impressions, and looking forward to the plan, because I have a feeling that it's going to be really exceptional, you know, experience you're going to have with Andy here. So, thank you.
I just, you know, I want to agree wholeheartedly with what Allison just said. I also want to express my confidence in Patrick and Bob, and trying to really get at the heart of what this is going on, but I do want to agree with Allison and say that I'm right there behind her shirt. Her experience in this is far beyond mine, but she really speaks for my thoughts on this as well.
Any other board members who'd like to be heard at this time?
Yes, Dr. Glenn.
I just want to say, I attended the PSBA Equi, diversity and equi conference today in Hardestford. It was, this is their second year, the first year they had it at Lehigh Valley. It wasn't part of the, like, pre-conference of PSBA, so this is the first year that it was part of PSBA. And the membership level we have allowed me to attend that conference. It was a great day, we attended free, and we got so much information, and it was really interesting, local teachers, administrators, attendings, and they, we even had a panel of students from, like, from various high schools in the area, and they were speaking. It was just, it was just wonderful. But they have a lot of resources and information, you know, available online. They have this, I only have one, but I just want to read a couple things off here about what they're, they're doing. But it's like, they have equity services, they have excellent public education policies, a commitment to equity. And they have a statement on back of this card, and it's also online, but it said that they recognize a critical role of school leaders in the vision of education for Penn State students. Penn State School Association calls for equity. And they want to define, you know, how they define equity. They, I just, you're probably familiar with the achievement gap, and they have a, they define what that is. And that's visibly what we see in test scores, the discrepancy in test scores, and it pertains may, a lot, you see a lot of that with students of color, with impoverished students, with students who English is their second language. That's the achievement gap. But what they have recognized as the real problem is the opportunity gap. So I just want to read what, how that is. So the opportunity gap represents how the education system delivers education to different groups of students. Disparities in educational delivery lead to different academic, social, and economic outcomes between students in Pennsylvania due to the inequitable distribution of opportunities, resources, and funding. So I think for many years, we looked at, oh, we have this achievement gap, what are we going to do about the, you know, how are we going to close this gap? But there's really a bigger issue, which is the opportunity gap. So PSBA has this call for equity, but it's not just PSBA, it's the state. It's not mandated that you have this, but Pedro Rivera, our, you know, Secretary of Education, he, that's part of his mission is, you know, to develop more equitable school districts. So in saying that, I hope that we can have a discussion about equity, about, I would like to see us work on developing an equity policy. They pulled up this map, now, the districts who have already done that, and she said, it's not going to take long, talk about this slide. There were five districts, only five districts in the whole state of Pennsylvania that had felt or written equity policy. So there, you know, there's a need, a definite need for it, it's going to be recognized, you know, at the state level, and I, I'd like to see us as board, you know, start to have some discussion about this. I mean, I, I don't, I know you, what did you say?
I'm sorry, I just, oh. So.
What kind of school districts are ones that have equity policies in place already? Did she tell you, like, was it urban school districts or rural, or was it just?
Oh, I, I think something, it was like a definite school district, I don't know.
Different type.
That's the answer. But she just pulled a map up, I don't even know which districts they were. But she showed on the map that there were five, and I don't, don't know what they are. But I'm, I'm not sure about the question you're asking, is it?
Well, I just was wondering if it was, you know, if it was more in the city, or if it was more affluent, that was having an equity policy, if it was just school districts who, you know, had more time, is it my policy? I don't know. Like, this was interesting, if it, if it would be, is it Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, you know, if there were, if there were school districts who are doing it, or is it, you know, more needy, less needy, or?
Yeah, well, well, the thing is, and this is what they stress, is equity is necessary for any school, whether rural, urban, suburban, small, large.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering, where is it starting? So, you know, we can find out, so we can, like, look at it, you know?
You could look at.
Look at their policies.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's, all this is, I think, available on the website, I'm sure we could find that out, and PSBA is a big, you know, resource available to help districts, but it's something, you know, how I feel about it, and how many people who were there today feel about it, and Pedro Rivera out there too, because he encouraging that as well, that it doesn't matter, like, how many. how many, you know, like, we all need to be looking at.
Oh, yeah, I agree, that we should be, I'm just wondering where it started, where...
It started here. We're already, we had a first day, opening day where we had a gentleman, Don Whitaker come in. We've came to our team, it was the second day now with Tyrone Howard, who's at the Berks Leadership Group out at Crown Plaza. So we're in our second training today about equity. Mr. Dupine and I were meeting with our small committee of Pennsylvania Food Relations, myself, him, and Ree Reynolds. But he gave me the name of a person from PSBA, Bennett, and I contacted her. And there are trainings that as a board, we are actually going to attend, and they will come to us on equity. And then we spoke about that, and we'll find out the districts that have the policies if we look at it in training.
Yeah, I can, I was trying out, I didn't know that, but I wasn't sure why you... Yeah, I just can't believe, if you thought it was a need.
No, I feel that, yeah, everybody would have a need, I was just wondering where it started, like, so we could, you know, branch off of that.
Usually, usually PSBA is pretty good about, pretty interested in equity policy, they provide a sample policy, they'd be able to adapt by those five districts most likely, if they, if they manage their policy services, which is most efficient.
Right, and one of the things they mentioned about it is it's going to have to be tailored to your district needs, you know, so it can't be like, one policy fits all. So it's going to have to be at the, you know, the local district level, but you have the... But they look, like you said, they will help you, you know, as much as you need, especially, you know, and you don't just jump out and write the policy either, because you need a lot of background work has to be done, you know, it's not like a simple task. Like, we have policies in place, we update them based on what PD is saying, it's not a PVA, they have PD mandate. But I feel very strongly, you know, about this. Well, we are, like, I'm sure that we are doing some things, beginning things like that. But I would encourage you to go to the website, look at some of the things that are there, some of the resources and information. I just want to see us, I'm excited about what I, you know, saw happening here today and I think we have to...
What form does one of those policies take? Because from my understanding, if public education for all, I mean, all policies, so how does it narrow, how does it define? I mean, when you've got the umbrella of all...
What do you mean?
The state says that public education must be available to all.
Right.
What that looks like, though, is what I think what you're talking about, is what does all look like? I mean, I'm not going to remember it exactly, you've got a better memory than me, Dr. Winters, but there were five areas. Started out with engaged learning, I believe was one of them.
Physical intimacy.
Emotional intelligence, physical location.
Physical integration, social and emotional learning, educational excellence, something related to instruction, and...
But I mean, there's five areas, and they talk about implicit bias, and they talk about how what you do in the classroom not necessarily overtly happens, but it happens. So they talk a lot about getting to know kids and know their backgrounds and, you know, loving your students. They talked about not just teaching students. A lot of it is wrapped into how we do things. So that will be all in the policy.
Well, isn't it true that most children that just start school like a kindergarten as compared to children that go to preschool, like three days a week, when they're three years, three years old, or they're four years old, that those children, they are far more advanced for the most part than a child that just comes into kindergarten and maybe doesn't know his colors or anything else because his parents are both working and, you know, they're, you know, they don't have time, you know, they probably take two jobs, a lot of you, a lot of people that are not in the middle class.
That shows our kindergarten readiness achievement gap.
So I think universal, me, universal preschool should be a must in every district, including our own. I know we only have a few, don't we only have a few pre-k's?
We have two pre-k accounts and programs that are funded through state grants.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I think we need to push the state to have universal preschool, and that will help the, to close the opportunity gap, because these children, you know, that are, that have, you know, low socioeconomic experiences, their parents, maybe any of them, you know, they're so busy just trying to get food on the table that they can't spend time with their children, like to read to them every night, you know, take them to zoos and take them, you know, to child children's concerts or whatever, so that they have a lot of experience, you know, with things and they can, they can integrate better with students as they go to school. So I, I mean, I personally think, you know, universal preschool is something that we should have in every district, to be honest with you, because it's so important. They say that a child's brain from time of birth until they're five years old is when they, they're so successful, you know, they can just soak up everything, soak up everything. And, and that's where it's at, because I know, I don't know about me, I'm sure you've spoken before, I sent, I sent, we have preschool works, but my, my children, they send their kids to preschool too. And it shows, I mean, my grandchildren, they're always students. And, you know, not because it's like their grandmother, but because, I'm sure I'm going to help a little bit, but, but it is because they had those opportunities out of their way.
Any other questions? Can you share that information? Because I'm not sure which website you're referring to. Can you just send that around? I'd love to take a look at that.
Yeah, I'll do that, I was actually able to look in, because I'm sure I can find those five districts that I asked have, have to...
Are we meeting in executive sessions?
Why don't you ask me a question?
I'll make a motion.
No!
I say no.
I'll second it, Jerry.
Oh, come on. You've got nothing to talk about. You should have your, you should have that before.
I'll accept a motion for adjournments at this time.
Go ahead.